Recording, so we are gonna start Policy Committee, it's nine oh four. And we will just, let's start with the forms, cuz I just, I read through them and the language is, in my perspective, not nice, or kinda make it people feel not nice about complaining.
And just because, oh, Rice, you passed them.
Oh, there.
Keep going up, 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 right there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and just so you know, I did for Maria, twenty-five twenty was approved last night, I did just take the direct language and change it on our draft, so that it just has that, and so then she can do the rest of the cleanup and call it good.
Okay, perfect, alright, so, um, if you wish to challenge a book, okay, so, first of all, why do we have part one and part two, do we know?
That's how they built it, um, I had the same, I just feel like it's not really how we typically do forms.
It isn't, and I don't think this is an introduction.
Yeah.
Um, we actually, yeah.
And we wanted this, so, just as we were editing this, we wanted this to be a fillable form, so then remember that, like, it, I feel like it should be similar to some of our other fillable forms, the way we formatted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, challenge a form for school librarian. For classroom materials.
And this one is the one specific to obscene materials.
Is this this, um, so, it's obscene materials, do you wanna make, alright, so, uh, I know you've.
It's tied to the new legislation specifically, not just any materials.
And I originally, when I, we were talking about building this, I wanted this to be one form, and I just felt like you could put obscene materials on the top, and then put just regular materials, but then, um, the feedback from the team and stuff, that was confusing. So.
Okay, well, okay, so, let's pull up the other one then.
Cuz they're really similar.
I guess, what is the difference?
So, obscene materials per the law has to be that a minor, um, so it's specifically to a parent. And so, and then, you know, we have a timeline, we have sixty days, we have to take action, we have to do something, and then, if we don't remove it, there's a fine attached, it's the whole, and that's why the law is referenced. There also is just a regular, I can challenge of something that I don't like, and that's not specific to a parent, that could be anybody.
Okay.
So, I mean, in my mind, we'd follow the same protocol, you know, we'd go through review, like, the difference is, is if they didn't feel like we-
Who's got the format?
And, and if we didn't, if they still feel like we didn't do our diligence, there, there is money to be, so, where you could, you know, object to a book, and that wouldn't be the case if it was just, I don't like the magic, or I don't like the whatever, you know?
Content, obscenious.
Can we, or should we, or would it like to put potentially obscene materials, because,
I don't think the law addresses potentially obscene.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
The law is pretty clear on what is defined as obscene.
Yeah, right, but I'm saying, this is a challenge form.
For obscene materials.
Okay.
And the thing is, is, I don't know that the law is black and white, but they give categories of where they feel they're gonna lie, so, it's, yeah.
Right, I hear what you're saying, as far as that challenge form for obscene, or?
The, the, the title of that said, uh, to me says straight out, these are obscene materials, and I'm challenging that.
From a parent's perspective, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is, it's a form, I, yeah, I get that, so, if it's challenge form for obscene materials, I just think it's.
Or you could do challenge form for materials viewed as obscene, or, I don't know, either way, I think it's just semantics, yeah.
It is, but it's, it's a little more blatant. It almost says, there are obscene materials, and we knowingly have them there, kinda, I, I don't know.
Which is what they are saying, that's what they're challenging, that is what they're saying, though.
Yeah, they're challenging potential material. Okay, so. I need this space there.
Comma. Tell them not anymore.
See, I don't understand all requests to object. Well, they're not objecting, they're challenging.
So we say all requests to challenge?
I'm not even sure if we need this.
I don't think we need.
I don't feel like we need that. Does the policy say that the questions, um, about the process are directed to the librarian? I thought it was to the principal. And I could be mistaken, cuz I did pull up the form, I just, I read that block, and I thought, what are we doing?
Did you think in one of the cases it, it wasn't either or?
It was, okay.
I think so.
I'll pull it up right now. As soon as my computer wants to work.
What did I do? Just that thing.
Close it.
Okay. Alright, so then, I think if we, this. Yes, it's better as a leading. A minor, like, district, school district student who obtained material violating, okay, section three, please complete this form.
So it says, Rice.
Please complete and submit this form to the library. Rice, question librarian, by superintendent, principal, and superintendent. Questions about this procedure should be directed to the, okay, so is it?
It says, school librarian, principal, and superintendent.
Okay.
And then, it says, if the question remains unresolved, the superintendent shall present the findings to the board on my A's position.
Was it or? Or and, I'd say and.
It says librarian, the principal, and superintendent, yeah.
Is that?
But this is about, like, if you're submitting.
Questions about the process, or about the?
Yeah.
The findings?
It's about the, like, the fact that you are, um, well, it says, entrust the school librarian to receive and process requests, so that's just processing the requests, it doesn't really address if you just had questions about the, I mean, I feel like what you would put if you have, you refer them back to Policy twenty-five hundred, cuz that lines out the process.
Okay.
And you need one of the people could answer those questions, but.
Is this even needed, though?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think we're making it cumbersome.
I think we are as well. Okay.
It gets always better to be able to direct them back to the policy.
I agree. So, parent information, okay, title, author, grade, the whole use, applicable, where is the material located? To help us identify the resource, okay? Schools, where material was found. Other, ob- objections, okay, well, what brought this material to your attention?
I, I think you should change that to challenge. You know what I mean? Cuz we don't say objection anywhere else, do we?
No.
So should we just put, like, in the title where it says, library challenge review form for obscene materials, do we just put, library challenge review for obscene material? Just not use the word form?
Well, I changed it to obscene materials challenge form.
No, and I think that, I'm just saying that, for that title, you wanna just put obscene materials challenge?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would like to.
Or however you, yeah.
Okay.
Hi? Are you guys, yeah?
Yes, we are. Alright, so, we are creating information, where was I, information regarding material? Oh, oh, yeah, I gotta move the cursor. Okay. Uh, it would say, specific information being challenged. Or, something along those lines, there we go.
Or specific information regarding?
Regarding the challenge?
Challenge material. Because there are, and certain questions about if they're challenging it is.
Specific information to challenge? Challenging information. Not to challenge. To challenge? No. Wait. Just a little cursor mover.
Cuz although it says, information regarding materials, so this could be, specific information regarding?
Specific information being challenged.
Being challenged, I think, is the, the set of words there.
Okay. Brought this to your attention, did you read the material in its entirety? Not, identify the portion of the material objected to, um, okay. Hate the word that.
It's an overused word.
Okay, so, we went to, specific information being challenged. And then, identify the portion of the material being challenged, that you believe violates this code, and why?
Do they have, can we just check it's the right code? Pretty sure it is, but.
Well, up here, so, we have eight, fifteen seventeen B, section three, is, I don't understand.
I feel like we have the code all over the place.
We do, which, I don't know why. This one doesn't reference any code.
That's because this one is just specific to the library, and it's just our process that we allow parents to challenge.
This is specific to the library?
Uh, eighteen fifteen is specific to any book, it doesn't matter if it's found in a teacher's classroom, it's in the library, it's public libraries, it's anything.
No, I don't think it was eighteen, was it?
No. It was fourteen seventeen.
Okay. That's materials harmful. This one is obscene materials.
This is just the definition of obscene, so you have to have both.
Okay.
Cuz this is, this is what means that requirement, but then the other one addresses what the process of, if it, you're concerned about obscene materials. That's why they have both.
What is this one?
This is if you're passing it out.
Harmful to minors, penalty, misdemeanor. This one's about passing it out, I mean.
I think the dissemination.
Yeah, dissemination, materials. Alright, so.
I just want, we should have it referenced once, and then, about twenty times.
Well, the thing is, is this is a definition, definition, so, um, do we need this here?
I don't think so. But, are we gonna put it somewhere?
It's right there, the second little lobby thing.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I think that's.
It is, it is, I think it should be part of the title, though, and then, have them, allow them to immediately pull that up. You know, having the second reference where they can actually pull it up. But the thing is, is, eighteen fourteen is the definition, so, the criteria needs to fall within that definition. We're saying, this is a challenge form pursuant to the definition and the actual violation. Complete and submit this form to the school's librarian to challenge a book in the schools, in a school library, or classroom material, that you believe violates the definition and the law. The definition of obscene material and the law.
Unfortunately, the law doesn't encompass the definition.
Correct.
So, we could, I mean, we don't normally do this, but we could just pull out the definition and have that be a narrative, like a bullet point.
But, this isn't the definition in the policy for obscene material.
This is just about school libraries in general.
Okay, well, where's our policy? Well, school, children's school.
So we reference, like, in, so we say, entrust the school library to receive and process, um, challenging any library material under Idaho code, we reference Idaho code, so we just reference it, and we talk about the challenge form, but we don't actually put the definitions in twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Would that actually have been a sentence?
It would have.
Do we wanna bring this back?
So, it's, we don't have that policy on here anymore, right? Okay.
It's twenty-five hundred.
It's not the right location to pull the folder, like that. Why are there three folders?
I guess one of them's from my agenda construction.
Oh, okay. Um, so then, is this the approved one? Okay. I should check the date, okay.
Right there is where we reference that, number six. And we separated it out, so again, in, as a parent, community, whatever you can root, challenge, but the obscene one is specific to parents.
This doesn't even talk about obscene material. Am I not spelling it right?
Or.
It's always a possibility.
Because of the formatting, well, we just have to pull up.
It doesn't say obscene material in this particular. My lord, my land. Does it use the word harmful? Is that what it's using instead? Yep, harmful.
Yeah. Cuz remember, nobody.
To do with obscenity.
Well, and it's, it's be such a, it's a grayer term to use. And it doesn't, they don't define it, they define obscene.
Right, harmful, subjective, obscene is now, we have a definition.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
This House Bill seven ten, I'm just trying to find what the. Did I take it away? I did. Okay, so, if you look at the House Bill show, I don't know if this just hasn't been updated yet on the state website, but it does in eighteen fifteen fourteen, it absolutely goes through the whole obscene material definition, and then it encompasses the whole process. That was the House Bill seven ten, so, and they're saying it's gonna be an amendment to eighteen fifteen fourteen, I wonder if it just hasn't been updated yet?
Eighteen fifteen fourteen. That's bizarre, cuz these updates go July one.
Right. But it, I mean, it has all of that, but here is the House Bill, right here, and then, I wonder if it just hasn't been updated yet?
It's overdue. Just a.
Cuz that makes more sense, it's all encompassing of the definitions and everything.
Yeah, it's been updated.
It has? But it doesn't include any of the bottom part?
Yeah, it does.
This one is?
Okay, start following along at part six, I don't read fast. Harmful to minors includes, in its meaning, the quality of any material, or of any performance, or of any description, or representation in whatever form of nudity, sexual conduct, sexual excitement, or sadomasochistic abuse, when it a appeals to the prurient interest of minors as judged by the average person applying contemporary community standards, and depicts or describes representations or descriptions of nudity, sexual conduct, conduct, so see, it's there.
What about all of this, where then it goes through the whole process of how you can,
okay, but.
Like a prosecuting attorney.
Right, but that is.
Do they separate it?
They do, it's, that's fifteen, fifteen seventeen B. So, alright, my struggle is, I think, since this will be a fillable form, to put the definition of obscene materials in our little box is way overwhelming. Um, so we should say obscene materials, um, or the definition of obscene materials is found in Idaho code eighteen fifteen fourteen, and put a hyperlink, so they can click on it. Because we're gonna have fourteen pages
Right.
on form, which is kinda silly.
Is that hyperlink right now in blue?
Yes, yes, okay, so. Okay, except we're linked to the House Bills, we need to be linked to the actual policy, so.
You had it open.
How do I, I, I do, but yeah.
Right back, right click, yeah.
Right click it. Edit link.
Remove.
Remove the link.
Oh, I can.
Or you can. Yeah, you could drag down and remove it, and just start over.
Okay, so, I'll make that go away.
Just a little further down.
Okay.
I'm not sure that was correct.
Oh, that's what you wanna do.
Yeah.
Um, so this is, uh, eighteen fourteen. Okay.
I just want to see her. We have to paste. What you copied.
Okay. Alright.
And then you can take it from off.
So then, it would be, cuz we're not violating the definition, we're violating the law.
But we probably need to make sure that eighteen fifteen seventeen actually goes to the, no, if it goes to House Bills, it's the same thing.
What is this, two different ones? It is. This is a puppy, I'm sorry. Okay. So this.
You can go right there, that little circle?
This one?
Break it, give it.
Okay. And then go, this is seventeen B.
I'm pretty sure they're different sizes too, just so you know.
I think you are correct.
People want the eleven, others twelve.
Lovely.
Or it's older.
Oopsies, now we're just, this is crazy. Alright, so here. Insert link. Control D. Like that, and we're good, okay, so I'll take this, and make this a little twelve. So this form must be used, so obscene materials is defined here, the form must be used by a parent or guardian of a minor student who obtained material violating section three. Please complete and submit this form to the school's librarian to challenge a book, any school library or classroom material that you believe violates fifteen seventeen B, okay? That seems to make so much more sense to me, okay.
I think it's better.
So then.
First, we need to have everything come the same font size. First we need to have everything have the same font size.
Okay. So parent guardian information. Okay, we were here. Specific information being challenged, what brought this material to your attention? Uh, did you read the material? Identify portion of material being challenged that you believe violates the definition. No.
No. It definitely the.
It, it's the other.
The law.
Yeah.
And remember, this isn't accurate, cause it's probably House Bill seven ten. The link's probably, there's a link there.
Oh, I gotcha, yeah.
Probably not, right?
So let's unbreak that, or break that. Oh wait, I gotta copy and paste here. See, again. It should still. Okay, and why? Please be specific and provide each page numbers and sections. You may attach additional information, this is not did within this section. Would, do you need that in parentheses?
I don't actually know why we need that. I, I like the please be specific and provide page numbers and sections, but I don't know why we need the. That part.
Because if this is an online fillable form, it'll, should, it'll just grow. What I am curious about is. So do you need all those, if it's gonna be a fillable form, do you need all the lines, or is that something?
It'll take care of itself when they build it, yeah. It's just nice to have a frame of reference if somebody that came in and said, I just wanna have a paper copy.
Right.
So, cause if I didn't do that, then somebody would not have lines and it wouldn't be user friendly.
Okay, so. Identify portion of the material being challenged that you believe violates this code and why? Please be specific and provide page number, save in sections, period, alright?
Much better.
Thank you. Alright, so then let's cruise over to the other form.
So just a question about that, cause when we finish both of these, are we taking these just?
Just, they have to go back to the form.
Right, but I'm not sending them out for.
No.
Okay, so. So they'll.
Cause the justice state was saying.
Yeah.
It was semantics. Doesn't need to go over survey, hopefully. Right. Okay, so this is obscene materials challenge form, this should be. Now, this is just for school library books, so.
So, the question I have for you is, um. Do we want to use the word challenge in both, do we wanna have another synonym so that it's not confusing, does it matter?
Well, we use challenge over here, so let's be consistent.
Okay.
What I am curious is in the policy, does it say challenge? Or does it say objection, cause if it does, we can just make the forms mirror the policy. Or change the policy, yeah.
Going off of this one. For the love. I've said that a lot, actually, this week. I have it up. Let me say challenge.
Okay, perfect, challenge it shall be. I am curious, oh yeah, so. Do you, do you wanna put the footer, cause I don't know how you do the online form, if you use this and then do something to it? Or can we put the footer in?
You can put the footer in.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if this matters in twenty five hundred, but in twenty five hundred, we actually call the form library curriculum challenger D form.
Okay, look, look at us being productive in the policy. Right. Hang on, we will, uh.
I hope not, I like obscene materials challenge form.
Isn't there like a, put the page number here, you know, and where is that?
Um, maybe go to options, right where the footer is.
Okay.
Where it's in blue.
Oh, look at you being so smart. Okay, but we don't, oh, she walked away, I watched her do that. Why, okay, what did she say it was called? School, library, what was it called?
It is right here, um, library curriculum challenge review form. That's an awful. The signs are going back up officially. I guess, uh, for a city hall meeting and they are looking at their permits themselves and possibly making some changes, so.
Good for them.
Yeah.
Way to be proactive.
Yeah.
Alright, so library. Challenge, oops, we cut challenge twice now.
Challenge review.
Review four, perfect, okay. Alright, so.
We need this whole, this form must be used by a parent or resident in conjunction.
Well, we use, we took it, what we did was we took it right here. Cause it was down here and we put it up in the little block. Well, it just makes sense.
It's cleaner, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know why we're trying to be so. Fancy, shancy. These blocks tend to draw your attention to you first. Okay, so, um, what was the layout on this one? Okay, this form, so this should go here. At the top, we'll. This form must be used by parent or resident of LJSD. Over here, we spell it out.
We don't normally have twenty five hundred F one, we normally have it off to the right. I think we'll make some changes.
Maybe.
In our forms, typically we'll have the title and then we have the twenty five hundred.
Oh, it's up in the right corner. Okay, so somebody put it there.
Just, it's not.
Seventy people. Okay, I don't know why it did that. But it should go, does it go over here or across from instruction?
Instruction.
Okay. And I don't know how to make. The tab up over to the side. What side is that?
Justify it either direction.
Is that the right side of the paper?
So.
Yes, I don't know how to put the right tab in, the, the right side tab so that it'll go backwards.
So, go to the top.
Okay.
See where the six is at? On your measurement piece?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The, the lines.
Well, see this little guy.
Yeah, but no, the lines above it, with that drop down arrow.
Oh, this one.
Click that. And then you can choose your justifications. Left, right, center.
Really? Well, no, no, I need to go away. Why'd it go down?
Cause there are.
There we go. This guy. Never gets holding over. Okay, alright, so maybe.
You have to get in front of it.
And what?
Move space far it, I guess, I don't know.
Oops, but. There we are, one less.
Kinda missed that one you flipped over.
No, thank you, cause, yeah, I would've driven me nuts. Okay, so. We have this form and please complete, okay, so we have, this form must be used by parent. Or resident of the LJSD, but over here, we don't say that.
Because this one's.
We spell it out.
Has to be.
So. How about, it doesn't say Lickland Joint School District, it just says Lickland School District. I can copy and paste. Not smart enough. District. Uh, in conjunction with the district policies and procedures. No. Objection to the school board. Okay, no. So, alright. So. Um, if you wish to object to a book used in a school library, please complete and submit this form to school's librarian.
I don't know that you need this identification, cause you've said it now twice.
Yeah. I'll request an objections to school library materials originated, this, okay, we're taking that out. Man, we're taking this out.
Cause that is in the policy.
What's that?
That's already in the policy.
Okay. Oh yeah, we're taking this out too. Look at that, made that super small. So I catch, okay. You wish to object to a book.
Should it be book or is it, is it specific to books or should it be library?
Materials.
I mean, it's specific to.
I'm just thinking maybe.
I guess we said curriculum, so curriculum is defined as, so.
Okay. Two.
I feel like, yeah, we should put with the title, it's library curriculum.
There we go. Okay, library curriculum though, or book is correct.
Yes, well, the actual policy is library, then there's a slash curriculum.
I was supposed to say it's, library doesn't, doesn't have that much curriculum. Can we do that?
Yeah.
Cause, no, I mean.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay, we didn't catch that on there, so. We'll just try and clear it up here. Please check the box that applies to you. Information regarding material. Where is it located? Okay. The school where materials, that's, I don't like the way this is written.
That long sentence?
Yes, because we've got school or schools, where material is, then we should have a slash R. I, I just hate that, just say. Um, just do the school.
School, like, you think they're probably gonna find it one location.
Well, yeah, I don't think.
And if we discover that, oh, I'm objecting to something that's at.
Multiple schools.
And then we discover it's in other buildings and that would be our job, but they're only gonna object to one that.
They find it.
Honestly, they don't know that we need to know that, because the moment we know that there's an objection, we're gonna pull it up and then see what schools it's located in Destiny. And so then like, if the objection is, I don't like, let's just say it was a book that it was at a, at an elementary school, but we feel like it's appropriate at middle school. Then the moment we pull it up in Destiny, we're gonna say, oh, this is at elementary school, so we're moving those all to the middle school because it's more, I mean, it could be simply. I don't even know if you need to know which school, because Destiny is gonna show us every school that it's located at. And in my mind, if we're pulling it from one, then we're pulling it from all unless it's a great appropriate issue.
No.
You know what I mean?
Okay, then I think maybe up here, we should have school student attendance.
Yeah, perfect.
Because if they're.
That gives you an identifier. Identified where it started from.
Yeah.
And then you can like, have you gotten something to the librarian, where, you were, was it at? But I feel like the moment we have an objection at a school.
It's not all, it's not just for parents or guardians of students, it's residents and district. Well, if they're, oh, I see what you're saying, cause if they're a resident, they would have to identify where they found it.
Yeah. But we asked that question.
Well, we ask it down here.
We ask it down there, we'll talk about.
School where the material is found.
Where we say where is this material located? So classroom and then, I guess.
Well, we're saying school library, but we're not saying which school, you could have a dropdown for school. Can they just slide?
I mean, it's a fillable form, I would imagine, yeah.
Okay.
But if you were gonna do that, then I would think all those little checkboxes, you'd have a dropdown. It would make sense.
Yeah, that's true.
Like book, audio, newspaper, you'd wanna drop down for all of that, which, I mean, might be the easiest way to do it. I keep putting it out, just depends on how you set it up. I think the fillable forms are through cam.
Okay, so the school where material found, that identifier does need to be on here for the case of.
For residents, yeah.
The resident, yeah. Objection, specific information, what brought this material to your attention, did you read the material in its entirety? If not, what sections did you read? Identify, oh yeah, here we go, please be specific. And provide page numbers. Oh wait, did I need to take all of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, okay, I was just thinking on the other page, it was bigger. I mean, there's more, okay.
Anything we would recommend as material?
Okay, is there any value in this material?
I feel like that's very subjective.
Subjective, yeah.
So then question five, does that matter?
Excuse me.
In the course of this, I mean, I guess it matters to you guys in the sense of if this came your way, didn't provide, but we. We say, I mean, that's, we have a policy that we will. Well, I don't, is that a relevant question here? Cause we're supposed to do that no matter what.
Right.
Right? Just thinking, like, if I'm providing an alternate, I'd be not, I should provide an alternate if they don't want their child, but they might not wanna challenge it. In the case of it being challenged. Like, I don't know, does that fit, it's not the same scenario, you know what I mean? But I, but I guess I could move forward with the instruction while the process was happening.
Would there, could there ever be a situation where, say, a novel set gets started and the kiddo's halfway through the book? And something comes out and the parent's like, you're not reading that book. Are we too deep into the situation where the teacher may say, no, like, I'm not gonna give you something else? Just don't finish reading the book.
They could say that.
Okay, so, I mean, not making the teacher force the kid to read the book, I, I wouldn't assume the teacher would do that, but if they said no. So in that case, they weren't provided additional, but there's, there's reasoning behind it.
Right, right.
So, I'm wondering if that sentence should stay.
Or could you just expand on that based on your, I didn't think about your scenario, so could it say something like, if this material was used in the classroom, were you provided an alternate instructional resource and or an option to? Opt or opt out? Or an additional option or something like that? Because, again, that a hundred percent could happen, cause if you're like, two weeks before you're finished and you're gonna start the emails, they're not gonna give them a different book, they're just gonna say, you're fine to be done.
Right.
Yeah. No, I think that's perfect.
Okay.
I like the question, what is your desired outcome, so remove, limit, limit my child's access or other. Yeah. If you, and then we have a whole third page. There we are.
Yay. Dare you. So then this is the library curricular curriculum.
That matches.
From my new gained knowledge, it should be library curricular materials challenge. Curriculum.
Okay, so twenty five F one and F two will just go straight to office for me, so I took note while you're taking the last two.
Okay, so this is. Two, oopsies. That's what I want.
Right, you'll come through there.
This is just awesome. As much as I hate Google. Gotta admit, okay, so there we go.
You can even say it's mostly different on the first page, versus the other pages, should make it really fancy.
Okay, so those two are done. I'm a little bit happier.
Those are, are clean, so then you don't have to look at those anymore.
Thank you, okay, so service animals. What I was curious about, should we back through this? Um, what I was curious about, should we back through this?
I can't remember what the ordinance said, did it say that we require vaccines?
It, it did say, um, where's that? Make that go away. I'm gonna make that one go away. Here we are, okay. Um. Oh, here we go. Yeah, I read through all of it, but they, they do require dog licensing.
You just can ask for it. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is on.
Well.
Well, it says city's animal control. Can ask to.
Okay.
But we can't, like when I commit a. Yeah, to our police officer, so it's very like a little bit more, um, descriptive. So then I guess my next question, not that I wanna. When it says police officer, so how does that really go?
Yeah. Well, okay, so the canine owners are required to have a collar on their canine. And identification tags and rabies tags on the collar.
Yep.
So that's a requirement for Rathrum, for Spirit Lake. Um, so we should require a collar with an identification and rabies tag on it as well.
So should this be in the policy, I guess is my question, or are we just referencing it?
Well, a link so that they can see it. And hold on a second, cause Spirit Lake requires a license. Which proof of rabies needs to satisfy the element to obtain a license. So we don't have to. Yeah, there's no mandatory collar needed.
So you could put something about, I guess the dog has to meet city ordinances and that way.
But there's this exemption for seeing eye dogs, dogs prescribed by a doctor for medical. That's the exemption for the license fee, so they still have to acquire the license, they just have to pay the fee. But, do we have Cootenay Counties, because we reference it.
I was just looking it up right now.
Thank you.
They, if anything, they might have like a dogs at large, but.
They primarily leave it to this various cities.
So it says, any person who owns, harbors, keeps or possesses a dog which is more than six months of age within the county shall procure a dog license as provided by this article.
So the county requires the license.
And animal control and a police officer can ask for that, but we can't. Outside of Rathrum that requires a, it on the tack.
Within our policy, can we make a reference to? That the owners should ensure that they are following both city and county regulations for dog ownership or whatever. I don't know if it matters for a horse. If we put it in the policy that they should follow it, but we're not enforcing the following of it, and then we have a dog in our school that's not following, how are we gonna know? That's why we're allowed to ask for, um, whatever the city's gonna require, so we can, but here's. Yeah, we're sure where that line was. Right. How we can ask. It doesn't appear that Rathrum doesn't require dog licensing. They just require your dog to have a collar with a rabies tag and an identifier on it. But the county and the city of Spirit Lake require a license.
Yeah, and in the county, they must provide proof of effective vaccination against rabies before a license is issued by its share.
Alright, um, so. Or, we just don't make a big deal out of it and put the resource at the bottom. I suppose that would be a board call.
We could, when we take this, we haven't sent this out for survey yet, but we could just take this with Amy's guidance and with the ordinance, we could, if we add Cootenay County on there and then the board can decide.
Okay, we do not have to have serviced dogs in training.
That's how I read that.
Yes, me too. Thank you. Uh, where's this strike, oh, that's right.
Hey. The only issue with having the board make that decision is this is gonna go to the August board meeting, which means that if it doesn't get approved in August, it's not.
In place from Sterling.
On the student handbook. When your parents study at school, that's the only kicker, so is there, with all these workshops, could we add that to one of the workshops for a discussion?
What would be the discussion?
About, um, Amy's guidance and the ordinance, about what they wanna do, because then we could make changes to policy and then bring it to the August board meeting. Is it over?
Okay, so five point one, point one oh four, is that correct? For the county?
Yes.
Okay. City of Rathrum is. Five dash two dash. Eight? And what is that titled?
The five dash two dash eight is. Well. It's all, I mean, it, all of it is under chapter two animal control, but that specific one is canine identification and rabies shot proof requirement.
And is the city of Rathrum code ordinances are given now?
I think it's an ordinance. It's, uh, it says code, but I mean typically. It's code of ordinances. It's pretty much the same thing.
So it's under animal control. What did I say?
Regulations and restrictions, five two dash six.
It would be eight, one more down.
Impound it?
Canine identification, rabies.
Right.
What I'm curious is code of ordinances, okay.
It's so weird that they don't like require you to register your dog. In the city though, that's a pretty standard. I mean, the county does and Spirit Lake does, why doesn't Rathrum?
Well, if you've issued a rabies tag, then you are. I mean, you're in the books, but it's still, it's not the same as a license.
Well, the rabies tag is from another area and it's not necessarily from the city.
You have to have a rabies tag to get a license.
To get, okay.
You have to show.
Rathrum has a little thing to do. My own brain hurts. Acquaintment, thank you.
I knew, I was like, this isn't our last word, cause it's a lot.
It is. Alright, and then, um, Spirit Lake's down. What is Spirit Lake? Wait, this is city of, oh, here we are. Okay, city of Spirit Lake.
Much cleaner title.
Six, yeah. What was that?
Five four twenty-six.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, and I still again said four, five, twenty-six, as I heard you say, five, four, twenty-six. Good lord.
City of Spirit Lake. And that's just, um.
But are they, what are they called?
Yeah, they code or.
Oh.
Or names or.
Spirit Lake, Iowa?
Mm-hmm, I knew it's kind of.
Spirit Lake, Idaho. Idoplas.
Spirit Lake Nation.
Dog ordinance.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Right, come on, send it down, go. Like, is that the city of Spirit Lake, go? Down one more right there.
Thank you. City code, how, how kind of them.
Do I get super creative, is it?
Yeah. We should take some lessons. Okay, city code.
Five four twenty-six.
Oops.
City of Rathrum, what?
Oh yeah, there are licensing of dogs.
I was like, was it dogs or animals, cause I was like, it's not.
Have to license your dog, but nothing else.
Alright. Okay. So then. What you're. Okay.
Were we just referencing it and calling it good? Do you want the board to make that decision? And I'm just saying it would be, if we brought it to one of these workshops.
Right.
That way it can get approved in August, so it can be on the student handbook, if we wanted it before school starts.
Right, exactly. Um. Let's just take it to the July, whatever.
July twenty-four?
No, there's another one, the work session for, on the seventeenth.
Nineteenth.
Is that what it is?
Or eighteenth. Whatever's Thursday. Eleven today, so eleven plus seven is eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. So we'll take it there, because the, the other board meeting actually has two, the bodies on it.
So then my next question is, um. Was that on, is that the eighteenth Wednesday or Thursday? Thursday, Thursday. Um, it'll be that night, uh, so do you want me to send this out for, um, survey? No, so then that means on the eighteenth.
Okay, well, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna go to the eighteenth.
Okay.
We're going to ask the board what they wanna do, if the board says, we don't wanna do anything, then you can just send it out Friday for survey. If the board says, make these changes or include this language, then I have no problem coming in. Oh wait, no, actually I do, because we have the interviews.
We would just take it right back to the twenty-fifth. We would be fine, cause then we'd bring it back on the twenty-fifth, I just was trying to look at that timeline. Um, if I sent it, if they want make, us to make changes, then we would bring it back to the twenty-fifth, make those changes, I'd send it out until the first. It would still make the board meeting, so we're fine.
Alright.
As long as we do it on the eighteenth, so.
Yeah.
No survey yet. It is, I'd like to be able to have all of that in the student handbook prior to.
I agree, it should be there. Okay, so nothing else needs to be done there. Alright, survey results for district owned vehicles. What do people have to say? Yes, to new draft looks fine, approved, looks fine, except the strikeout for of the, in the third paragraph under. You still need the of, okay. That looks fine. Hard for me to tell the difference between, uh, yeah, okay. Um, so, let's pull that up.
And then again, we guess onsite.
So where was that?
Third paragraph.
Thank you, one, two, three. There's, no, strike through.
I know, it might be, I don't know what they started counting as paragraphs.
The strikeout of the of that in the third paragraph.
Under district owned. I was like, there has to be something that we're missing in.
One, two, three.
Oh, we saw the of.
The personal use of. Okay, yeah. Perfect. Thank you personally. That's a quick fix, love it. Okay, and then, nothing changed here, although they didn't understand the purpose.
Right, like that's part of policy and procedure.
Right, okay.
So then are we saying eighty-one seventy goes to the board?
NP, eighty-one seventy P. Alright.
So at this point, we will have four policies going to the board?
Self-directed learner. We got time. Why is it all blue? Did we not have one?
No, this is new, this is one that.
Well, it's actually been in law for a couple of years, but we just.
Most districts don't have it, something that Debbie Critchfield has said this is something he should look at.
She's been pushing it and, but it's been in law for a while, so I did give you an example, um, uh, Boundary County has been using it, if you scroll down a little bit more. Uh, their example, um, what they did, this is all their stuff around it. Um, but, uh, and that, this is the example that Debbie Critchfield, she just said this is kind of a model.
Okay.
That they use, so.
It looks like we took the X. And just copied it and.
Use it as our draft, for the most part.
And just this little paragraph missing. Which is fine, so let's.
Just start reading through it.
Go through the. Alright, the. Offers students the opportunity to be designated as a self-directed learner for the purpose of being granted additional flexibility and meeting the district's graduation requirements. This allows students to tailor their education activities. Would it be educational? Education activities, uh, to meet individual learning goals developed in consultation with the student's supervising teacher and their parent guardian.
I think educational. It's not education activities, but.
What's that?
I think it should say educational activities.
Thank you. See, I get stopped on a word and then it's like, what? Okay. Students designated as a self-directed learner shall have a right to flexible learning to support their post-secondary goals. Flexible learning may include. Uh, flexible attendance requirements. Flexible attendance requirements, well, if they're requirements, how are they flexible?
So that's where this is, and it's interesting, cause there is, I know a statute that drives this policy apparently, that says if they meet criteria, that we have to set in a policy that, you know, they're proficient on their ISATs, maintain X, Y, and Z, you do these things, no behavior issues. Stay caught up on missing assignments, they have identified as a self-directed learner. Now those kids, so we would take care of those kiddos that were running into, where parents were like, um, we have twelve absences and I'm having to petition for my credits, and if I'm denied, my kid has an A in the class and you're gonna take his credit away? Yet he did the work and he worked with the teacher, that allows for that flexibility for those particular students that we've identified meet those criteria that gives them that caveat that says they can work on their own. That gives them that caveat that says they can work on their own. And still be productive and, and get the job done, and it won't hurt our ADA. But it also puts them in jeopardy of losing their credits.
So there are requirements that need to be met in order to have flexible attendance.
And we have to determine what that looks like.
Okay, um.
Did Boundary County get there?
So, here's, yeah, so it's almost, we need ahead of that, what the requirements are to attaining it. Which are probably. And then which rights they achieve. Which are probably in the P.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because we have.
The uh, hope.
A form and, or actually, it's not a form, it's an application, so that should be an A. And then procedure, no, that's a.
No, I.
You. I'm sure ISBA's policy is F, and they call it an application, so. Um, okay.
It is F, that makes me feel better.
I could assure you, it was them.
I changed it though, so we're good.
So we do have a procedure, so I think that, because this is policy, we're saying that flexible learning may include. Flexible attendance.
Yeah, the P has eligibility requirements.
There we go, thank you. Attending school virtually, um.
And that's why we can decide whether we want that to be there or not, right? Like if we feel like we're gonna give them flexible attendance, and that flexible attendance means you're checking in virtually.
Mm-hmm.
But they don't get to be a full-time virtual learner, and still count as our, I don't know, but maybe we want that in certain instances. For medical purposes or whatever, if a kiddo has to go online, they would still count as our student, and their attendance would count for us. But it might be a very specific criteria that they meet, that means they have to be online. Because you know, for medical purposes, they won't be in attendance, but it's not their attendance or ours, but I don't know.
So flexible learning may include virtual school attendance? Instead of attending school virtually? I changed the wording.
It's, I, I like that wording.
It's more consistent with what the others.
Okay. Extended learning opportunities as described in policy twenty-four sixty. Which, do you have a pause here?
I can't.
Seventeen.
Thank you.
It is just extended learning opportunities, but I feel like we have that, we just, is it worded something different?
Or we could just, is it under acceleration?
Um, it's just extended learning opportunity, so we do all, I'm gonna add this to our deal, because that's a part of it.
Okay.
If we're gonna do this one, we have to do that one in conjunction.
And Boundary County does have an extended learning opportunities policy, probably slim from, we could pull from ISBA, but since that's where we. We could use that as a reference.
Why is it not letting me save it?
It's because we have to have it in our policy somewhat, because it's things like internships and workforce training and employment focus, and we do some of those things.
So I'm gonna take that off, because the, it's, the reality is extending the learn, extended learning opportunities. And it sounds like, what you've said with the self-directed learners, it's, it's a collaborative. Plan created by the school, the parent, the student.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just gonna add twenty-four sixty on our agenda, so we'll look at it as a part of it.
Okay, um, and then other, it said any other, but just other agreed upon learning. Inside or outside the classroom. What happened to the, oh, okay. Do we need to have that? Just other agreed upon learning?
Right, especially when it says this may include.
Right. Mm-hmm. This may include.
That's not a sentence.
It's not limited to. Curriculum compacting acceleration or credit by examination. Okay, do we need the and at the end of three?
Just because you.
You're sequencing, okay, okay, so maybe we could take the semicolons away. Um. Okay, but let me ask you this, for flexible learning, might there be a situation where you have flexible attendance? Um, only?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what, I mean, that's what I would think.
Because if we're sequencing this, we're saying it may include all four of these. Or, I don't think we need that.
Right, if the may include, kind of implies an or, but this makes it cleaner.
Yeah, because I don't want it to be like they have to have all four of those things.
Like each situation would be looked at individually.
Right. Okay. This flexibility may be used to allow the student to make use of the district's educational resources. In customized ways, and or to allow the student to pursue educational opportunities outside of those offered by the district. Okay. Why else would we use this? Because this is the sex may be used, is there another reason we would use it? Shouldn't it be this flexibility is used to allow the student to make use.
Or this flexibility allows.
There we go.
Yes.
Thank you. The student to make use of the district's educational resources in customized ways, and or allows. Student to pursue educational opportunities outside of those offered by the district. The district maintains a policy of not charging a fee for any course for which academic credit is awarded. In keeping with this policy and with the state's constitution's requirement to maintain a system of free public schools. The learning activities incorporated into this student's, into the student's program of flexible learning. They not include activities for which a fee is charged. What? So if a student is dual credit. To me, that's part of flexible learning.
Right, everything, the same thing with our IDLA courses, and if, if we don't offer the course, they don't pay for it. But if we offer the course and they wanna take it online, they do pay for it, so I don't know that this completely fits how we do things.
Okay.
Alright, I mean, does that, do you agree, that that doesn't seem to be reflected in what we do? Between dual credit and or IDLA courses and those things?
Well, do we have a policy that says we will not charge a fee for any course that, uh, is an academic, where an academic credit is awarded?
I feel like we might with our dual credit.
But with.
But they use.
Dual credit.
We do have kids that have had to pay for some of that, because they tap out their go-on funds.
Yeah.
You know, some of our kids who.
Yeah, you're right.
They get their associates.
Right.
And it costs them seven hundred dollars versus seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Because they had to, they used up.
They went over that, what is it, the four thousand forty? Do whatever it is.
But now it's eight thousand or whatever.
Okay. But the thing is, is that fee is actually being charged by NIC, it's not being charged by the district. The district, yeah. So we're not charging them.
But they're getting credit.
But they're getting credit.
From them and hence dual.
The dual credit. But the reality is they could take it through whatever the school.
Mm-hmm.
At no cost, they wouldn't receive the college credit.
Right, right.
So we're not charging them for taking the NIC course, NIC is.
Yeah.
They're, they're getting the collegiate credit on top of the high school credit.
Right, yeah, so, um.
So if you just, if we wanna look at policy twenty-four thirty-five, that is our advanced opportunities. So then it talks about dual credit, fee payments.
Eleven, twenty-fifteen, alright, okay, um, okay, advanced opportunities.
So then the eight and six program talks about the state paying the.
Okay. Right. So I guess. What kind of is a. Where is it, where's the blue one? There we are. Um, so this is saying. That. The learning activities incorporated into the student's program of flexible learning may not include activities for which a fee is charged. Okay, but if. I, I think we need to take this paragraph out, simply because it's, it's to me a stumbling block in the sense that if a kid. Um, in their flexible learning, if they're doing the dual credit thing. They're gonna have to pay, I mean, granted, there's money to cover it, hopefully, but if there isn't. Then that's a conversation the family has to have with the school to determine if it should be part of their self-directed learning program, I would think. Would you not agree?
I agree.
Okay.
Well, even when they looked at some of how that was worded before, in terms of their own independent courses of, like if they're gonna take an IDLA class.
Right.
Because they don't have our science options.
Right.
And they, this fits their career plan better.
Right.
And they're gonna take it through IDLA, if we don't offer it, then we pay for it.
Right.
But if they're taking something we offer, because it fits their schedule better, and they wanna do work release, because that's part of their plan. Then they have to pay for it, because it's a choice they're making, so I think that contradicts with that.
Directed learner law, and I don't put up your references of D, but I just did a quick.
Does control F not work on Mac?
It does.
That's not.
Because I use it all the time.
Okay, um.
It's a puppy.
Hello.
Did you search for it?
Huh?
Did you search free? Okay, search free, because I can't.
Free doesn't show up.
Free doesn't show up?
So I'm looking at that self-directed learner.
Okay.
Idaho statute, you type in free, and there's zero and a zero.
Uh, does, uh.
Fee, zero and a zero.
Okay, what about program?
One of them, any other credit or program permitted under Idaho code or district policy as applicable to the student's learning plan.
Okay. We're gonna take this out.
Take it out. I just wanted to look up the actual law and see if there were any provisions there.
Yeah, I was worried.
That's fine. The learning activities incorporated into the student's program for flexible learning may not include activities for religious purposes. Is there anything in there that says?
That's religion, yes, I bet it's even. There's nothing about religion. I read L I G zero, I didn't have to go very far into the word, but it was nothing.
Yeah. Um, because that's, I think, between the school and the student in the areas, that's. Alright, a student's self-directed learner status may be terminated if the teacher supervising the student's self-directed learning. Determines that the student is failing to meet the requirements laid out in procedure, okay? Or is failing, uh, to complete assignments within the time provided, fair enough. The process for designating a student as a self-directed learner and maintaining this designation is provided in procedure. Okay, this procedure shall be reviewed and approved by the board. Uh, prior to promulgation and prior to review, revision of this procedure. Okay, so.
Uh, does it, I need to say it's gonna be reviewed and approved by the board?
Well, okay, the district's showing, of course, the state board, okay, so this, but all of the policies are required to be approved or reviewed by the board. This isn't saying it's in a annual thing, so why is it even in there?
I don't know.
Okay, this process, okay, maintaining this does, is provided in procedure here, but up here, it's terminated. Okay, I don't think we need that paragraph either. Are we okay with it being moved?
Because it never, it, I don't know that we ever referred to the process for designating. For, for receiving the designation.
Okay.
So the first sentence can stay with the rest of the video?
No, um.
Just relaying out what their, what. What their rights are, and what they have, but is this place where you also want to say, how do you get that, what, what is the process?
Well, or is it saying that every person that's being designated has to be approved by the board?
I would say, uh, this sentence, that one right there. Goes here. Alright, so the Lincoln Joint School District offers students the opportunity to be designated. Um, as a self-directed learner for the purpose of being granted additional flexibility and meeting with district's graduation requirements. This allows students to tailor their educational activities to meet individual learning goals. Developed in consultation with the student supervising teacher, their parent, guardian, and the student. The process for designating a student as a self-directed learner and maintaining this designation is provided in procedure twenty-four seventy P. Students designated as self-directed learners, as a self-directed learner shall have a right to flexible learning to support their post-secondary goals. Flexible learning, okay. Shall have a right to flexible learning. Let's do that, um, but, yeah, I'm not sure about that, that sentence. Students designated as self-directed learners, or as a self-directed learner. Shall have a right to flexible learning, well.
Or just say, uh. The designation of a self-directed learner. Enables the student to support their post, their, um. Or just say, flexible learning may include.
Shall have the right to flexible learning. That's what this whole policy is about.
Mm-hmm.
Can't you just put flexible?
So learning may include.
Take out that whole sentence right there?
Well, because the, the purpose, okay, we offer the student the opportunity to be a self-directed learner. For the purpose of being granted flexibility in meeting their graduation requirements.
So. Took that off and just said flexible learning may include.
Yeah.
Or flexible learning within the student.
I just think it's simple.
Between self-directed learner.
Although, let's see, if we bring it back. Although, let's see, if we bring it back. Oops, that's not what I wanted to do.
I'll do, I'll do, I'll do.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Here's a question for you. Kids that are dual credit, are they automatically classed as flexible, or given flexible learning?
No, this is all new.
Okay.
Like in most of our cases, our dual credit kids are in building as a full-time student, because we offer so many in-person.
Okay.
Some of them go to NIC for things and I don't know how that works with their full-time status. I do think they still count for attendance purposes. Let's say I do three classes here and three in NIC. And I'm not on campus in the afternoon. I think I still count as one full student in the building.
I don't know.
This would guarantee that. If they're, you know, if they were to be off-campus for some other coursework.
What do you mean, classifying them as a self-directed learner would guarantee them that? Okay. Cause.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Cause stating that students designated as self-directed learners shall have the right to flexible learning to support their post-secondary goals, to me, that's addressing dual credit. Meaning that, you know, if kids are flopping around the country busting their touches, going to NIC, whatever, well, then they're entitled to, because it's a right, flexible, a flexible learning schedule.
Right.
But. I don't, I just, I don't think we have to state that.
Well, another piece of that that I would say fits there is I look at the statute. It, it talks about starting in grade five, demonstrating mastery of addition, da-da-da, and then starting at grade eight. So this could be something that is addressed with kids fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. Where I don't know if post-secondary really is gonna be.
Okay.
Appropriate for those, but.
Maybe just, if we said, um, self-directed learners may have a.
Could mean just to support their educational goals.
Well, even just eliminate that part. Self-directed learners um, may have these flexible options. Flexible attendance, virtual attend, or, uh, flexible attendance, virtual attendance. Yes, there you go. I thought already you were going with that. And Fraser corrects me. I rarely do, so, not a worry. Um, so flexible learning for self-directed learners may include these thingamabobies. Um, alright, so the flexibility allows the student to make use of the district's educational resources in customized ways and/or allows the student to pursue educational opportunities outside of those offered by the district. A student's self-directed learner status may be terminated if the teacher supervising the student, student's self-directed learning determines that the student is failing to meet the requirements laid out in the procedure or is failing to complete assignments within the time provided. This procedure shall be reviewed and approved by the board prior to, okay, I, oh. I don't, why is that there?
I don't know. Like I can see where the other one that we just took, took out, why it was there, cause they're pulling some of the straight from statute. It says in here, starting in grade eight, flexible learning should further the student's progress toward post-secondary goals. So that's probably why they put it in there. They just pulled that straight from statute.
Yeah.
Um, same thing with the other one that we had changed. It says flexible learning may be different for each student, all those lists of things, and it said any other agreed-upon learning inside or outside the classroom. So they just used the exact wording from the statute and listed those things. That's where all that came from. So this one.
But, I guess.
I'm just looking to see if it says anything about school board in the statute, if that's why they put it in there.
Well, what this is saying.
And there's nothing about school board in there, nothing.
That the procedures reviewed prior. Oh wait, no, this procedure shall be reviewed. I think they're just saying that this whole thing needs to be reviewed. But this isn't the procedure, this is the policy. So I would think that the policy and the procedure should be reviewed hand in hand. If, and, which is what we do. I, I, I don't know.
You don't have to do an exclamation.
Right. Well, we used to, but we try not to do that. Each year, the district shall report to the State Department of Education the number of students in attendance who are designated as self-directed learners.
We will have to figure out what that looks like, because we've never done this before, so we'll have to reach out to the State Department.
Do we wanna clean up that? One, two, three, third paragraph up. Um, student's self-directed learner status may be terminated if the student's teacher supervisor determines the student is failing. Take out that extra self-directed learner part, cause it's a bit repetitive. If the, T, yeah.
In the statute, it says the building administrator shall rescind self-directed learner designation upon recommendation by the teacher or teachers. So.
Wait, sorry.
Oh, just says the building administrator shall rescind the self-directed learner designation upon recommendation by the teacher or teachers. So that loss of status.
Okay.
Through the principals, whatever the administrator says there.
Cause it's kind of a, I mean, there's a supervising teacher assigned to the student, but it's collaborative. I wouldn't think it's just one teacher.
Well, it depends on how we set it up, cause none of that's, like, this just says that the status.
But then that's part of.
Is permitted based on agreement with the student, teacher, or teachers and parents or legal guardians, so. All those pieces, I think that's how they worded it, but it just states that it should be that team effort and that the teacher or teachers will refer to the principal to rescind that.
Who is supervising team? Rather than one person? So then I think this should be reworded in a way to reflect more of what you're saying, because it's not like just the teacher's gonna say, you're done. Um, it's, yeah, there's a process. What could be supervising team rather than teacher? Well, it sounds like if the students.
Teacher or teachers recommend to the principal. This, and it, I mean, it's pretty specific in here. It talks about all the things that they should, like their academic growth is off-track. Progress toward the post, post-secondary goals, other measures of student learning. If they fail to meet the agreed-upon criteria or fails to stay current on classroom assignments and doesn't cure the failure within.
What's this statute number?
It's very tall. Yeah. It's. Interest. Thirty-three, five, twelve, D.
I just make a, a link to that code. What did I do?
Thirty-three, five, twelve. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. It's Dean, right? Yep, thirty-five.
So is there a specific D or is it D within the twelve? What is twelve?
It's thirty-three, five.
You twelve D.
Like it's, it doesn't, it's a valid standard right here. End of the top end. Yeah.
There we go. Okay.
Next one, that you can say exactly where things came from. Students have a right to be flexible learners. They just pulled something out, straight from statute.
But not necessarily.
Not with context necessarily.
Okay, so.
And so, it's super individual. So, you know, the teacher's like, hey, they're behind in assignments, or they're not meeting the deadlines. And they've put together that plan and says, you've got to tell X to get this done and it's not happening. Then they're a violation of that right, per se, and they.
Well, they've done it more than once or.
But it looks like each one of these plans is separate. And that, so the procedures part of that's probably gonna be important.
So here is. Lovely, we love those long things. Alright, so.
Three and a half.
Alright, um. So in order to remain a self-directed learner, the student must meet criteria agreed-upon by him, his teacher, or teachers, and his parents or legal guardians. Criteria, okay. If a student fails um, to meet the agreed-upon criteria or fails to stay current on classroom assignments and does not cure the failure within the, an agreed-upon timeframe. The building administrator shall rescind the self-directed learner designation upon recommendation by the teacher or teachers. Okay. So what if, alright, we just. The reason why I took the criteria out is I just, well, maybe it should stay in there. Oopsies. There you go. Um, to give some context. Okay, so, um. So if we took this out. I won't delete, I'll just strike it for the moment. So we have the. So we have the flexibility of a student to make the resources, whatever, and then we go right into this. So instead of building administrator, it would be school principal. Upon recommendation by the teacher or teachers, okay. So that's the law. And we're not changing it. So would we agree to put this in as opposed to this little paragraph?
The only thing I would think, do you wanna include something about what they require? Exactly, with that meet the requirements laid out in procedure, so they have reference to that procedural piece where it says um, criterias. Self-directed learner student must meet criteria agreed-upon.
In procedure twenty-four seventy P.
Instead of by him.
What is the title of that?
Cause self-directed learner? Yeah, just self-directed by the procedure.
Okay. So does the, so within the procedure that you said is multiple pages.
Four, three and a half.
Okay. Um, it establishes the criteria to become a self-directed learner.
It has requirements, it has all the grades, it has like the requirements upon designation. It has a lot of optional statements, so we'll have to decide if that's gonna be. And I guess it would be something for each student that would look different. Like if they're just looking at flexibility for attendance. They're gonna check that box and the rest of it's. Yep.
Okay.
If they want flexibility for classes they take or, you know, oh, I want credit for doing. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So then we could just take this away. So this gives a little bit more meat to the policy about when it would be, uh, removed. The opportunity or the privilege or whatever.
Rescind it, straight from.
Right.
Statute says.
Yes.
I would say this is a really good stopping point, cause the next two are lengthy.
But. I'll put that in there, so I know that we just didn't, it's from ISBA, that's actually from us. Okay. Alright, so on that note, we can, oh, and we have down here. We need to make sure we have those policies. And that's the titles of those policies.
So I did add extended learning into our deal, so we can work on that next week. Um, so just to recap before we go off, uh, twenty-five hundred F one and F two will go to the August board meeting as well as eighty-one seventy and eighty-one seventy P. And then twenty-three seventy-five will be brought to the board on the eighteenth for some additional guidance, including the narrative about the ordinance for all three and then the attorney's feedback.
Perfect.
And twenty-four thirty-five does, for us, is advanced opportunities, so it's an exact match. And then twenty-four sixty is the one we don't have. Yeah, but I got it on the agenda, so we'll have it for next time. If I can get through this. The other one you said was thirty-four forty, right? Which is the student fees one? And that. Yep, student fees, fines, and charges is exactly ours. So ours just says student fees, fines, and charges, that backslash return of property is not part of our title on our cross-reference, just so you know. We might have to just look and see when the last time that one was updated.
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm playing.
Sorry.
And I'm not focusing.
She's saying thirty-four forty, ours says student fees, fines, and charges, yeah, so we probably, I need to probably bring this one back up.
It doesn't say return of property?
Yeah, and the last time it was updated was oh seven. Yep. And it does reference the legal code of payment of fees or returning of property, so that's probably why that title was there for, county or whatever. Do you want me to bring that one back in conjunction with this, since we haven't updated it since oh seven?
Student fees, fines, and charges, sure.
Okay, cause I brought twenty-four sixty, so thirty-four. And it probably should be fees. Just to show you, here's what the title at the top of the page it says. It is the backslash. It just wasn't what was on the website.
Right.
So then you have to short, it looks like a piece of things, but it is the policy we have and it's super short. So I would just need to. All add it in there and I'll do the draft and all that. I'll work on that.
Alright, so why does this? Why is it not going back? If it were.
I could just undo.
Okay, so that's part of it. New show. This is a lot of work for me, people. Okay, stop. No, make it go away. How do you?
How do you just crop it?
Yep.
Yep.
There we go. Oh, that's hard, hard. Here we go again. Makes me feel better. Are you happy now?
Thank you.
Hey guys, thank you.
Stop touching things. Done.
Walk away.
Yes. Walk away. Okay, on that note, we'll go ahead and in policy committee, it is ten fifty-five, thank you all for coming.